Hi, this is Donna Graham. We're about ready to start the meeting.
Okay, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Listen carefully so you get the routine down.[24.59][24.59](Laughter).[25.59][25.59](Laughter).[26.59][26.59](Laughter).
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order.
On October 22, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman-at-large, Alderwoman-at-large, Hoshana Kelly will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start, I'm going to ask Alderman Dowd, under state law, that you give us -- that you can't be here, a reason that you can't be here, and if you're alone, and if you can hear us.
I'm having an issue with my leg that's causing me difficulty to walk, so hopefully that's getting better. I can hear you, and I'm all alone, yes.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Very good. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Loz.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Melizzi Goya.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 13 present.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen A. Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. The main item I wanted to discuss with you is R. 19-184, an item that's on for first reading but an item which is of some urgency and which needs to be acted on tonight for reasons that I will explain. As you recall, the legislature in the last session increased both municipal and school aid that would go to cities and towns across New Hampshire. But after the budget passed, that budget was vetoed, and there was not a resolution of that, of the budget, until September. And then it was worked out at that point that there would be additional aid, I think in a reduced amount, but additional aid both to municipalities and school -- municipal aid and school aid. But after the -- immediately after the budget passed, because the formulas and the like are fairly complicated, it was unclear as to exactly how much money Nashua would get. And we only learned, really, last week what these specific numbers would be. And what the numbers are, are about 1.8 million in municipal aid and about an additional municipal aid, and about $2.7 million of school aid. That puts -- learning that late last week puts us right up against the tax, the setting of the tax rate. The tax rate is set by the DRA, Department of Revenue Administration. The city does not set its own tax rate, although we can usually accurately predict what it's going to be. It is not -- this tax rate is not set by the city, but instead the state DRA, and they set the tax rate later this week. So -- and they -- all they do is apply the numbers. And the legislature in increasing aid in these categories that I have mentioned either didn't take into account at the time or wasn't aware of the delay that would result, which would mean that the city would have very little time to evaluate what to do with respect to this additional aid and with respect to the setting of the tax rate. The bottom line is that unless R. 19-184 is enacted tonight, no money will -- there will be no city aid, and there will be no -- it will not -- no city aid will be freed up, and no municipal -- and no school aid will be freed up either, and none of the money will be used for that, would could be used for those purposes. So what R. 19-184 proposes is that we increase the amount of surplus that gets applied to the tax rate from 4.5 million to 6.2 million. And this will have the effect of reducing the projected tax rate from around the 3% we are talking about to more like 2.6%. So we'll have a lower tax rate than we had expected. And it will enable us to apply $2.9 million of money to various needs, city and school. Now, what R. 19-184 needs to be enacted tonight because the tax rate is going to be set in a few days, or in a couple of days. There is no necessity to act on R. 19-185, which proposes an allocation of the money. It's just one of many ways that it could be allocated. Because once the money is freed up, there is no necessity to immediately decide exactly how to allocate it. In fact, based upon, I believe, the opinion of Attorney Bolton, because R. 19-185 would involve a supplemental appropriation, we actually need to hold a public hearing with respect to this item, so acting on it now would really not be the legal way to proceed. So what I'm suggesting is we really need to act on R. 19-184 tonight. 185 is before -- will be go to the Budget Committee, and they will deliberate a public hearing, and it will come back to the board. Now, I met with the Budget Committee last night on both of these items in anticipation that we would have this issue before it -- before us tonight. As I'm sure Chairman Dowd will confirm, the Budget Committee recommended R. 19-184 unanimously for passage tonight. And with respect to 185, simply said that their intention would be to accept the referral and hold discussions and hearings regarding -- and the public hearing regarding that when the time comes. So again, R. 19-184 will increase the tax, the amount of surplus applied to the tax rate. It will help us reduce the proposed, the projected tax rate to 2.6% increase, and will free up $2.9 million of the aid that we're receiving from the state so that we can use it for the purposes for which the legislature intended it. Now, of course, I'm available for any questions on any of this, but I think I've summarized that we discussed things in a little more detail last night, and I'm sure we'll discuss these issues with the Budget Committee again when the referral is made. Also, Madam Chair, on a less detailed note, we have Friday night the opening of the basketball court beside, behind the community center on Arlington Street. We have been very generously donated this court, or the funds for this court, and you've accepted those funds, by Dick Anagnos, the developer of the Marshall Street housing at the corner of Marshall and East Hollis Street. Many of the kids that have moved into that project are, and that's workforce housing, affordable housing, 150-some units. Many of the kids who have moved into that, those apartments, have begun to attend Dr. Chris's school. And of course, the community center is right there, and they have been working very -- attending and working very closely, the families and the kids, with Megan, Karen, and the other people at the community center. So the owner of the apartments, that is Dick Anagnos, felt that he should make a contribution to the community center, and in talking with Megan, the thing that they thought would be most useful would be to convert this asphalt area in back of the community center to the basketball court. So Friday, we're going to open the court, and we're going to have a shooting contest. I have agreed to be outshot by some of the kids in the neighborhood, which is, I'm sure it will happen, in free throws. I know possibly Alderman O'Brien is going to be there.
I've been practicing.
Yes.[633.62][633.62](Laughter). And I'm very -- we are, we are -- we'll see who prevails there. Alderman, Alderwoman Wiltshire is going to be there. I think Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Karen, Matt Plant, who's the police commissioner. He said he'd come as well and try to shoot some baskets, so free throws, and we'll see if any of us can beat the kids in the neighborhood. There'll be some prizes awarded, and so we expect to have a good time. So I hope that any of you who are available can make it. You're free to join the free throw shooting contest as well if you feel like you can beat Alderman O'Brien. That will be a tough, tough thing. And we look forward to that event, to having the basketball court. Thank you to Mr. Anagnos for donating the money for this very useful project, and hopefully we will see a successful event on Friday night. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Mr. Mayor, my granddaughter was the regional New England free throw champion for the Elks. I might invite her to come along.
Have her come by.[707.13][707.13](Laughter).
Responses to the remarks of the mayor. I'll sit on this side.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I just want to confirm the mayor's analysis of the budget meeting last night, and I think anytime we can lower the tax rate for the citizens of Nashua, it's a good thing.
Thank you. For the record, Alderman Tenza joined us at 7:32 PM. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the meeting, the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of October 8, 2019, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication from Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development, regarding downtown riverfront TIF update.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication from Douglas A. Berry, Humane Society of Greater Nashua, regarding the appointment to the Animal and Dog Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and refer it to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Communication from Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development, regarding communication regarding ordinance 19057 with downtown improvement committees comments.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
There are none.
Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October 8, 2019, Special Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. Planning and Economic Development Committee. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 15, 2019, Planning and Economic Development Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 16, 2019, Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October 17, 2019, Special Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Special Budget Review Committee that was held last night regarding the proposed resolution 19-184. So the Budget Committee did meet last night and approved, recommended for final approval R. 19-184. Resolution that the mayor just spoke about, the money that comes, came down, is coming down from the state. And as the mayor indicated, we have to take action tonight, otherwise we can't control where that money goes, and we would like to have more control over that. So we, the Budget Review Committee, did recommend final passage, final passage on that. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of resolution R. 19-179, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua School Custodian Union, Local 365, Council 93, Ask Me, AFL-CIO, from July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2021, and related transfers.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move for final passage of R. 19-179, and I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. This has been a long time coming for this bargaining unit and for these hard-working men and women of our city. In 2015, school board decided that it would be a good idea to investigate privatization of the custodians, and that proved to be an ineffective strategy that the city was very much against. It would have been actually more costly to us in the long run. And then, after that decision was made to keep the custodians, they've been fighting to get a contract since then. So this has been going on since 2015. It's a, what I consider to be a sad chapter in the city's history, but one that, hopefully tonight, with your support, we can move beyond and not go down this road again. We have hard-working people in our schools, and the custodians are exactly that. They are custodians of our school. They are the ones that get there early in the morning, leave late at night. They're the ones that know where every leak is when it first develops, and they're the ones that tell us what we need to fix, when it needs to be fixed. They take care of our schools. So I'm proud to support this. I think that, from a cost perspective, it's one of the more modest contracts that have come before us. I think it's fair, and I would urge everyone to support it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Melizzi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 yay, zero yay.
And that motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance 19055, authorizing the Police Department to donate lost or abandoned bicycles.
Alderman Dowd.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, sorry, I had it on mute. This legislation allows the Police Department to make a viable use of the bikes that they collect as stated in the ordinance, or the resolution of them. And there's a little complication. There was a change in state law that allowed us to do this, so, and that motion could be explained by Corporation Counsel. But it's something that we are allowed to do, and it will benefit the people that end up having the bikes donated to them, and I think it's the proper action to pass this.
Did you want to make a motion, Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, make a motion for final passage of this resolution.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 19055. Discussion on that motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Melizzi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 yay, zero yay.
Ordinance 19055 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of resolution R. 19-182, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of 25,000 from JAS Research and Training Institute into public health and community services grant activity, FY20 environmental health tracking.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Clea. Alderman Loz. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Karen. Alderwoman Gathwright. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderwoman Melizzi Goya. Alderman Schmidt. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 19-183, to establish a committee to draft a master plan.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Clea. Alderman Loz. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Gathwright. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderwoman Melizzi Goya. Alderman Tenza. Alderman Schmidt. And myself. Given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 19-184, applying surplus in reduction of taxes.
Given its first reading? Oh, sorry. I moved to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of R. 19-184.
We need a roll call.
Yes, roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Melizzi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 yay, zero yay.
Alderman Dowd.
Second reading of resolution R. 19-184, applying surplus in reduction of taxes.
Now Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage.
Motion is for final passage of resolution 19-184. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
I understand what the mayor has presented to us. I understand the reasons for it. I'm really, I'm in favor of doing this, but when I look at the resolution, I just want to make sure, perhaps through you, we could ask Corporate Counsel to reassure me that we're doing what we think we're doing here. Because the resolution says that, you know, whereas the state has provided some extra money, and whereas in 174, which we adopted a couple of months ago, that we directed that 4.5 million of the unassigned general fund balance be applied to reduce the tax rate. And whereas now it would be prudent to lower the taxes, and will result in lower taxes for 6.2 million to be applied to reduce the tax rate. This 6.2 consisting of the 4.7 extra money that we're getting from the state, and now 1.5 million of unassigned fund balance. And then it says now therefore, and this is what we're doing, therefore it is resolved that 174 is rescinded, and 1.5 million of the unassigned fund balance be applied to reduce the calendar year tax rate. It doesn't say we're going to apply the 6.2 million. It says we're going to apply 1.5. So am I missing something, Counsel? And could you?
The DRA will recognize that as other revenue. The tax rate is always set by the DRA with a fairly simple formula. They look at our budget, our share of the county's budget, and then they subtract from that revenue we get from other sources. So what we've predicted for the auto-registration revenue and building permit fees and all the other various licensing fees and so forth, and money that we receive from the state. Subtract that, they find, they get the number that has to be raised by taxes, they divide that by the total amount of taxable property we have in the city, and come out with a rate per thousand, which we know is the tax rate. The idea being that if we get that much collected in taxes, that along with all the other revenue will equal the amount that we've budgeted plus our share of the county budget. So we don't have to tell them to deduct the 4.7 million. They will automatically do that. And essentially what we're doing here is saying, okay, the amount of other surplus money, when we were going to make it four and a half, we don't have to because we've got 4.7 coming in. We're going to make it one and a half, with, together with the 4.7, brings it up to around 6.2. But that also essentially saves us that other 2.9 or 3 million. And as the mayor was saying, we can then, you can then make a rational determination in ample time as how to allocate those funds. And so this will accomplish that objective.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, so I support this. I'm, I know there are a lot of people in our city who are, will be looking forward to a lower tax rate. My question is, if this aid is only a one-time deal and it's not going to come next year, are we going to be artificially reducing the rate? And if anyone here who is a state rep can speak to whether or not we think we'll get this next year.
Mayor?
Well, it's actually a two-year, it's actually a two-year program, so we will see the money next year. I mean, we are applying, we were, without the aid, going to apply 4.5 million dollars to the tax rate. Now it is 6.2. So to that extent, we are using, to that extent, a million seven, we are using this additional aid to help reduce the tax rate. So we could do that again next year. If the aid is not available the following year, then that would be that 1.7 million-dollar issue that we would have to potentially cover.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Melizzi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 yay, zero yay.
And resolution 19-184 is duly adopted.
First reading of resolution R. 19-185.
Relative to the supplemental appropriation of 2.9 million from FY2020 assigned fund balance.
Thank you.
There being no objection, I'll accept the first reading of R. 19, excuse me, R. 19-185 to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a public hearing for Monday, November 25 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. New business ordinances.
Ordinance 19059, authorizing stop signs on Charlotte Street at its intersection with Charlotte Avenue.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Gathwright. Alderman Clea. Alderman Lopez. Alderwoman Melizzi Goya. And Alderman Tenza. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance 19060, establishing a handicap parking space in front of 13 Norton Street.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Gathwright. Given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance 19061, authorizing stop signs on Glenn Drive at its intersection with Nottingham Drive.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Clea. Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance 19062, prohibiting the use of tobacco products near the city-owned buildings and in city parks.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Ordinance 19063, first reading, amending the Ordinance 19063, first reading, amending the elderly and disabled tax exemptions.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cle. Alderman Loz. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Karen. Alderwoman Kelly. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. Period for general public comment. No one has signed up. Remarks by the members of the board, I'll start on this side. Alderman Clemmons?
I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else? On this side? Alderwoman Malisi Goya.
Thank you. I would just like to congratulate everyone who participated as artists, and those who did the planning and attended the Art Walk this weekend. We certainly lucked out with the weather, and the storm blowing through in the middle of the week. And as I walked around on Sunday, I had many positive comments from the artists, as well as from those who were participating. So, thank you to everyone who made that happen, because you make it happen not only for the people who attend, but for the artists. And many of them expressed how much they enjoyed being here, especially some of them who were first-time participants and look forward to coming back. So, thank you for everyone's efforts.
Alderman Clemmons.
So I, I, after I had said I didn't want to speak, I looked at my calendar, and I realized that this is the last full board meeting before the election. So I just wanted to remind people to go out and vote in the city election, which will be on November 5th. Polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
That was November 5th?
Number 5th.
Alderwoman Malisi-
And there, I had made a note before, I would like to confirm this with the city clerk. Is this Friday the last opportunity people have to switch their party prior to the primary?
Presidential primary will be open from 7:00 to 7:30.
Right.
Party affiliation changes prior to the presidential primary.
Right, so, you can do whatever you want to do, but it has to be done by this Friday, and you're open in the evening for that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Remarks? Anyone else on this side? Alderman Lopez.
I do intend to be founding the pizza party. I would like to thank, I would like to wish Alderman Kelly a happy birthday. I would also like to echo Marian Malisi Goya's comments about Art Walk, and I would like to wish a congratulations to Manny Ramirez and Cecilia Obari. Anybody who happened to be out at Art Walk, and maybe saw a giant crowd gathering on the bridge, that was because the two founders of Positive Street Art have reached a new level of development, I guess. And Manny did propose, it sounds like Cecilia is going to go through with it, so congratulations to both of them. And then finally, I wanted to just let the public know, particularly Ward 4, that oversized trash pickup expires this Friday. So you have to call DPW, for example, if you're putting your couch on the sidewalk. You have to call them to have them remove that, otherwise, it'll be there all winter. So, keep that in mind, please.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Alderman Cle.
I, I'd like to echo what Alderman Clemmons said about the election on November 5th. In, in addition to electing city officials, there will be two questions on the back of the ballot. So even if you feel that, that there's no contention in your, meaning that there aren't people running, which there are, and you feel your vote doesn't count, you do have two questions to answer, and they're very important. And I think people should come out, voice their opinion on both the sports betting and the election of officials in the, in the midsection. So, I think it's important that we all get out there and vote. Thank you.
Remarks? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I also want to wish Alderwoman Kelly a happy birthday.
That's it? Okay. Alderman Gathright, you're all set?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, I too would like to wish Alderman Kelly happy birthday. Is there some unwritten law that if your birthday is on a meeting date, you've got to supply the libations afterwards? But anyways, happy birthday, Alderwoman. Also, too, I, I'm looking forward to Friday night to be there. I'll be there, I'm a, I got a double-torn rotator cuff and a double hip replacement, but I'm classified as a wringer. So, kids, come on out, and if you want to shoot against me, go ahead, if you think you got the mustard, so we'll try. But it's a very good cause, and I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Alderwoman-
I can still do under you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
It's going to need a ladder, you need a ladder truck up there. Thank you for the birthday wishes, it's lovely to be 21 again. The other thing I wanted to mention was the Soup Kitchen Shelter, and, sorry, Soup Kitchen and Shelter Dinner Auction is coming up on November 2nd, so we won't meet before then. If you'd like to attend, you can order the tickets online, it's always a lovely event, and they're a wonderful organization.
Thank you. I too would like to wish you a happy birthday, Alderman Kelly. And congrats to Manny and Cecilia, that was great. And the Art Walk, it couldn't have been more perfect weather, there were a lot of people downtown, and it was, it was a really good event. Alderwoman Malisi Goya, that's three.
I just remembered, I believe, and Alderman Lopez can help me, the Saturday is drug takeback?
Yes, and they are also taking e-cigarette devices.
Hmm.
The what? Oh yeah, without the batteries, please. Blowing up on us.
And I think that information is on the Police Department website.
I believe it is, yes. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Tomorrow night, Wednesday night, 7:00 PM, right here in the Aldermanic Chamber, will be the infrastructure meeting. All are welcome to come, they're lots of fun. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, tomorrow evening, at National High School North, will the Joint Special School Building Committee and the architects, and the construction manager, will be giving a presentation to the Board of Education to solicit feedback on the middle school project. And the following evening, on Thursday, at 7:15, we're going to have a very short joint special meeting to do some, some, just some administrative things. There'll be no discussion about the middle school project at that time, because at 7:45 at National High School North, there's going to be a, a formal presentation to the public, where they can go and look at what's going to be proposed, and can ask questions, and provide any feedback to the Joint Special School Building Committee.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Other committee announcements? Seeing none? Do I have a motion? Alderman O'Brien?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
I concur with Alderman Trebek.
Alderman Karen.
State Karen.
Alderwoman Kelly.[1748.26]